Six thirty-one, call meeting to order. Approval of the agenda that may be amended. Underneath, I'm going to put in, say at number ten, move executive session down with ten, just an update from the bus, Chris.
Okay.
The contracts on the bus, so I got some paperwork with that. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition?
Yeah, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes.
Two sets.
Just two sets, so hold on a second here.
Twenty-third.
Yeah. And then the fourteenth.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything, I read vote.
So September twenty-third, all three of us here, I didn't see anything change in it.
No.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we got October fourteenth, all three again, I didn't see anything in this either.
Yep, agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do it for the minutes. And then we have Lyle Jepson's cedar appropriations request for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Each year Lyle comes in with-
Olivia corrects.
Gives us an update of where the money is going. And normally, a lot of the other folks, it's just, they just put it on the ballot, it's already on the ballot, but they come in and give us a little update of what they are.
Thank you for having us again. We appreciate your support of the Regional Marketing Initiative. Olivia has all the data and statistics from how things have been going. Recently, we had a weekend getaway program, and we were at the Foundry, and we had people at the Grand Hotel, had five families from around the U.S. who put their names in the hat, and Olivia can talk to you about how many people she interviewed, but the exciting part of that was really, it's just marketing for us, trying to get people to come here. And the goal is to help our area businesses with trained staff who are coming from other Olivia knows how to target certain areas of the U.S. to get in front of people, and I think you got in front of, for the weekend getaway, about eight hundred thousand people, of which a whole lot of people put their name in the hat for a free getaway weekend. Frankly, we won't tell them this, the families, that is, we didn't care if they came, we were happy we got in front of eight hundred thousand people. And now, we have a lot of contacts because of that, and we will continue to reach out to them. But our goal has been, and this is our eighth year of this program, Killington has been with us for eight years, and we thank you for that, and our budget allows us to reach out, our budget allows us to entertain people here, and our budget also allows us to retain people. So once people have moved here, we talked to Rutland Regional Medical Center, Killington, to General Electric, and we encourage them to send people to meetups that Olivia organizes. And those meetups are intended to create relationships with people who are already here. So we'll invite people like Mr. Half or any of you to come to these meetups with the goal of creating a relationship so that people will stay here. Because it's easy to come, but we need people to stay, and we want them to grow their families here. And so, we believe it's working, and Olivia has some statistics she can share with you, and probably I said too much about the weekend getaway, but let me pass this around. In the past, I think this last year, you had in your budget, and we very much appreciate it, six thousand dollars. Our total budget for the year is generally between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty thousand, and that allows us to do the work that we do. We have Carly Haven, who is our concierge coordinator, so that when you go to realrutland.com and you click on, you want to talk to somebody, you actually talk to a real person, and that person's in our office. And she is able to connect you with other concierge volunteers who can answer your questions. Little do you know that when you're talking to Carly, she's interviewing you, so you may be in Colorado, and she's interviewing you to find out, how many children do you have, what do you like to do? And then she connects you with a spreadsheet of individuals that we have to set you up with somebody who has similar interests to you. All about relationship building. So Olivia can walk you through what I just gave you, and maybe I should have started with, yes, we're here to ask for money, but whenever you see me, you probably know that. So thank you very much for indulging us. Olivia.
So if you look at the right side of your folder, the Weekend Getaway Rutland County Scavenger Hunt, this is a collage of photos from the weekend getaways throughout the years that we've had, these are the families who have come, and we give them a scavenger hunt that takes them to all twenty-seven towns in the one city throughout Rutland County, so that they can really get a feel for the entire county, what area can they see themselves living in, do they want to live in Killington, would they rather be in more of a remote area or in Rutland City? And as you can see, they went to Thundering Brook Falls and took the gondola up to the top of Killington. And then behind that, this is kind of our quick fact sheet, so this is taking a look at the concierge program over the years, and it also breaks it down to 2024, how many leads and people we've had interested in Rutland, Vermont, come through. So a lead is someone who clicks on our website and says, tell me more about your area, I'm interested in moving here. And as you can see, we've had two hundred and two people from 2021 to 2023 move here using the concierge program. And as of October eighteenth of this year, we've had forty-two people move to Vermont, thirty-nine have moved to Rutland County, and we still have more families who are working with us that want to move before the end of the year. So we're set to do pretty well this year. And on the back, there is some information about the occupations and industries that they move and take jobs to, where they move to, and our sponsors of Regional Marketing Initiative. Please stop me if you have any questions. This graph right here is an example of the statistics that we keep track of. So each month, we run all of the numbers for our website. In July of 2024, the green represents July, the blue is June, we were running the Weekend Getaway campaign in July, where our numbers increased by four hundred and twelve percent because we were putting that much money into the marketing to get in front of eight hundred thousand people. So we do know that the marketing works, and all of the money that comes from your town definitely helps, and is appreciated.
Seventy percent of our funding comes through corporate donations from many of those businesses that you see who are our sponsors. The remainder comes from our towns, and so we have a number of towns that contribute, Killington, Rutland, Danby, from small to large, who are contributing to the process.
So I went to your annual meeting the other night?
Yes.
And afterwards, I, someone came over and said, can I talk with you folks? And it was a gentleman, him and his wife, they moved here from Thailand during the, they were at your event, but moved here from Thailand, he still runs a business from here, he lives in Poligny, runs a business, and his wife works in Fairhaven, not in Fairhaven, Castleton for the college. I think they have two children, I thought it was amazing that somebody from Thailand was moving to Rutland County, you know, like, how do we do that?
Well, I was excited too, because there was a gentleman and his wife, Kyle and Rachel, who came to the meeting, and after the annual meeting, they came up and said, we'd like to be on your committees. And it was like, we did something right, they wanted to be on the committee. They were putting their hand up before we asked, so we were happy about that.
And they are a great example of a couple who have moved here through the Real Rutland Program. We've worked with them for a few years, they moved from Texas. Some people contact us and they say, I just got a job offer with Rutland Regional Medical Center, help me, I'm moving in a week. Others, they're like, tell me about it, help me through the process, we're thinking in a couple of years. And they're, one example of them, who, they're really looking for that community aspect that we have.
And Carly will answer questions like, what are snow tires? Because some people have no idea. What is fuel oil? I mean, what's that all about?
Yeah, bosses.
So they're questions that we just don't think we're going to get, and we can answer, we can actually answer them, so.
How are you doing when they come in and ask a question about housing?
Not as well as snow tires. So that is an issue, obviously, and there is a committee in the Rutland area that's working on that, but everyone's working on that. It's a tough one, really is. In that, I'll quickly change the subject, because that's not something I can give you a great answer on. But if you look in the back behind our annual report, you'll see the Fall 2024 cohort, and there were four companies, not five, there are five here, one's actually going to be bought out. But four of these companies pitched on the Paramount stage during our annual meeting, two of the companies received packages of twenty thousand dollars apiece, another got a five thousand dollar check. And this is through our startup Rutland Business Incubator. And what we're trying to do with our startup incubator is to bring businesses to our county that are tech-enabled businesses, that are high skill, high demand, and high-paying jobs, that will help the other businesses like restaurants and small shops and businesses, because they'll have disposable income and they'll have time to dispose of that income.
Yeah, I thought I was on Shark Tank, the way you did the presentation, and I had to get up in front of everybody, and then we cast our votes, so it was pretty cool. My last question is that this is like, I think, our third year of doing the six thousand dollar rate. How are the other towns doing, and what is your increase in, are you seeing any increases? Are you asking anyone for increases from, or are you okay with the six K?
We're always interested in more, nobody's ever interested in less. We appreciate what you provide very much. The city of Rutland is providing sixteen thousand, that's our highest, but they're the largest. You go to Danby, and they're doing thirteen hundred, because they have thirteen hundred people. So we find that it's pretty comparable. You're going to grow here, which is a great thing. It's really up to you what you feel, if you would like to continue, and we hope that you would. It's totally up to you what you would like to provide.
I'm going to open it up to you guys, do you have questions?
I am totally supportive of these efforts, I think, you know, I think we should look at the whole budget of where we go for the year, for making expenditure, we should commit that we want to be part of it again. Personally, for my businesses, we're seeing, and I don't know if it's traction from this program a hundred percent, but we're seeing a lot of foreign visitors coming that are working for us that have moved here to Vermont without a program, do not speak any English, and we're actually navigating our way around it, and my company is actually pivoting a lot to become more bilingual, so that we can fill these positions that are desperately needed. And so, I think, you know, all of these efforts are great, I think that, you know, it's like, I think, it's very interesting just kind of cold calling, getting people that are looking to relocate from wherever, and having the ability for them to come here and take a look at it, I think it's kind of cool, and interesting that they'll actually do that. So I applaud you for all that, and I think you got some great partners there too, and I think, I think we should be one of them. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have nothing to add, it sounds like you're doing all the right things, and fully supportive, so.
So we're starting our budget process in the next couple of weeks, you've already asked for.
Right.
So this is in the appropriations anyway, and it's already in there. As like Chris says, as we look at our budget or whatever, and we get closer to it or whatever, if there's something else that we can do or whatever, we'll, we'll take a look at that at that point, so.
We're happy to come back, talk about anything you'd like to talk about regarding this, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You're not going to be offended if we leave?
Not at all. We'd be surprised if you didn't.
Have a great night.
You have a good one, thanks a lot. Lacretia, next up, is border liquor control.
So we have two, we start with the two renewals. We have Sunrise Homeowners Association, third and first class.
Can I get a motion, Rob, to have the Town Clerk's Office move forward with Sunrise Homeowners Association?
Yep, motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Stand.
Okay, next renewal is Casey's, third class, so what happened is he, he had applied his first six-month license when he first purchased the restaurant, and that's why it's out of sync with his first class.
Okay.
It's just the third class.
A motion to allow the Town Clerk's Office to move forward with third class for Casey's.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Stand.
The next one is a, it's the Killington Mountain Lodge, it looks like they have a new management company, and it's a first, a third, outside consumption, and second class, and I think there's someone present that might answer questions if you would like.
Yeah, there's somebody that doesn't look like he's been around town for a while.
About a minute and a half, yeah.
That long?
September seventeenth.
Okay.
So it's been over a month.
Welcome. So can you just give a rundown, what you're doing up there, or?
Yes, so I work for the Waterford Hotel Group, and we assumed management of the property, of the management contract for the property effective September the seventeenth. And part of this, we need to have a liquor license, so we have the same ownership, it's just that the management company changed. What I do, I'm the Task Force General Manager at the property, so I'm responsible for everything that we do there, from a guest satisfaction aspect, food and beverage, rooms, the whole thing.
Okay, so Lacretia, first, third, and outside is all the beer and alcohol, correct? Mixed in there, and then the second, the second class-
Yeah, the third is, the third is hard liquor.
Hard liquor, right. And then the first is the beer and wine, outside is, you have one little tiny area that's always been, so you're still using that.
One tiny area, is it like a, just outside the-
Restaurants.
Let me ask you, which I'm a little embarrassed about, but I haven't been here for the warm weather, really, so.
Right, yeah. And then the second class is to serve people that are going back to the rooms?
Yes.
So, and this is, this has all been, so everything is here except for a new application because it's underneath a new management, Lacretia?
Well, it is a new application, that's, it's not, so that is a brand-new application, they paid their fees to the town, and, but yes, it's new management, they have to go for a new application.
Right, but the previous places for the last twenty years have received all of these licenses.
That is correct, yes.
They had a second-class license?
Yeah, we did that, I know, two, three years ago.
Yeah, they added that, I think, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that was like, three years ago that was added to.
Yeah.
I think that was more of the COVID time or whatever, so they go right to their room with it. So can I get a motion to allow the Town Clerk to move forward with WHG KML Management?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
You.
GMNGC website URL change.
Oh, yeah. You're all set. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good to meet you, everybody. World Series.
So when I saw this come up, I know this happened once before, and there was another website at some time that we had, and it's just, it's, we're just not renewing whatever we have on time or whatever, and then it gets into someone else's hands. So I believe that Brown Golf is coming in and is just saying that, you know, however it happened, it happened, and the owner is asking twelve K for the domain name to come back to us. It says, we currently do own the GreenMountainNationalGolf.com domain, I think that will be more valuable long-term, and we recommend changing our domain name. It will be short-term work to provide awareness to the golf community, and customers familiar with our old domain, but long-term, I think it's a stronger website. And this is from Justin Stetson from Great Life Golf. So I did go online just yesterday to look at this other website page that they have up, and, you know, it looks, it looks good. My only concern was, is that when I did do Green Mountain National Golf Course, or GMNG, it brought me to, and then when I clicked, it says-
Which you'll have to change, yeah.
It shows the GoDaddy or whatever, so.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not fully functional yet.
This Green Mountain-
It wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, so it's-
Green Mountain, GreenMountainNationalGolf.com.
But it's still being held by GoDaddy. I wouldn't give up yet on this, personally, but I don't, at the end of the day, I had someone in my office looking into it, and she took off early today before we could get to work, but, see what she finally got, but it's like, I don't disagree with Justin's thought process, for one, but twelve thousand dollars is ridiculous.
That's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous.
And it's usually what they, I mean, but GoDaddy usually brokers these things in between, and, but, I think we could, I could probably have some follow-up conversations with you, Tom, about it, just where, where it comes out.
So when I go right now to GreenMountainNationalGolf.com, that's fully, the one that wants twelve thousand is us losing GMNGC.
Correct.
So we've lost GMNGC. They already have this one that they're asking us.
We're up and running on Green Mountain National Golf Course.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're up and running on that.
I'm not sure that I love the abbreviation, I mean, nine times out of ten, we Google and then-
You Google and you go there anyway. Yeah, so I'm trying to think of like the, it's almost like an IP question, or like, what's the value associated with this name, and I couldn't think of one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
There's really not. I mean, I wouldn't pay anything for it.
Yeah, the only thing you would think of paying for it is if there was, if there was some cost associated with the transfer, and you would say, if it's really going to cost me two grand to actually do this work, then I'll offer you two grand for the domain, because I don't do the work, or I'll just do it myself.
Or the pamphlets and everything.
The only issue that comes into play is, when that did come up for renewal, it was registered to somebody through the town, or whoever put it together way back, with their email address, and they got notified, and it fell on deaf ears.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would suggest in the future that we make sure it goes to the town manager, and it's dealt with so that it falls under a red flag, so however changes in time, it can be dealt with.
Yeah, and it's renewed on time.
Yeah, I agree with that, the other question I had was, this domain is owned by the town, then? It's not owned by the, by the company?
Not owned by Great Life Golf.
Great, okay, perfect, yep, just wanted to make sure that.
I think we've run into this a couple of times, Mary Ellen's gone through, where we get into, trying to get into some websites or whatever, and somebody leaves and whatever, you know, they're no longer there, and we don't get the email, we don't have the password, we could have the email, but we don't have the password to get in, and I think that's, you know, I think Mary Ellen and you have had some conversations about trying to get some kind of like lockbox or whatever for emails and passwords, so, you know, even that we just say-
The transferable, yeah, right.
Make it go to the town manager, but town manager's email address has changed a couple of times or whatever. Lacretia, you have your hand up.
So that website was associated with David Sucey, and so when David Sucey left, when, yeah, when he left, and we found out that the website was going to expire, I tried very hard to get on the GoDaddy website to renew it and to update the credit card and automatic payment information. And I even reached out to David Sucey, asked him for his password, which he gave me, and for some reason, nothing was working, so we could not get back into GoDaddy to redo the website. So that's what happened.
So, I mean, I guess right now, they've got Green Mountain National Golf Course up and running. They can try to see and wait, you know, keep on moving forward with that, and if we ever wanted to get GMNGC to come back for a couple hundred bucks or whatever, then-
At this point in time, no one types in GM.
No, no, no one even does favorites anymore, it's all so, so fast.
So that's basically what Justin's saying here, I'd rather go with, so let's just make a motion for, they've already gone, but let's just tap them on the shoulder and say, good move.
Way to go.
Keep moving. There's no vote on that.
Motion to keep moving.
Motion, good job. All right, so let's make sure, like Chris and Rob were saying, and Lacretia's kind of pointing out, that we need to get some kind of, where if anyone's gone, that there's some box or something, or, when I say box, it could be an electronic file for all passwords or whatever.
Yep.
So, hey Will, I think you're up, driveway permits.
Wonderful. I will not take much time with you guys tonight, just have a couple permits to review with the sled board, looking to get these signed off. I've gotten them approved by our town road foreman and our fire chief, who's with us tonight. Both of these driveways were in existence previously, and we've taken the steps to get one of the driveways properly registered in the town's database, and the other driveway is a creation of an extension of their driveway, and they're turning their driveway into a horseshoe-type model with a second entrance for their driveway. It's pretty standard, it's just a regular U-shape. The first driveway I have here is Chris and Heidi Matusik, I can pass this around for people to review. All of these are very standard, I mean, a lot of, a lot of the area that these driveways are already going to be built on has already been disturbed by the existing driveway, not a very, not a very in-depth, in-depth project at all. A lot of these are kind of, you know, smaller projects before the, before the winter really kicks in, and they took the steps to properly register them with the town and get their permits approved.
So the fire department went out and checked it, and then the road foreman went out, Kevin, went out and checked it?
Kevin's gotten all-
And now that whatever has to go inside of it? Are there any conditions that have to go in it?
There's very few. The, it is four fifty Courier Road is the Matusik driveway, that one has a, there's a ditch that they're going to be building over, so they have to, we had our road foreman evaluate that for the proper culvert size, to make sure that, you know, driveway is built to standard, there's nothing that's going to be-
There's seventy-five feet of culvert there?
Seventy-five feet of culvert?
This is, is this that one?
Uh, no, there would not be seventy-five feet of culvert on there.
No, that was another one that they're working on, that's, that's not-
Oh, no, that's the, that's the distance between each, each end of the driveway. The culvert, the current entrance to their driveway already has an existing culvert.
Okay.
It's a standard eighteen-inch HMP culvert, it has to be built with twelve inches of the topsoil on top of it, using standard, standard driveway gravel material.
That's a lot of culvert for a driveway.
No, yeah, that's, that's the distance between each, each of the-
But there is one out there that we were talking about and saying it has to get knocked down or whatever. I think Abby was in front of us talking about it. So anyway, the driveway, eighteen-inch driveway cover is required with minimum twelve inches of top cover. The driveway entrance onto Town Highway must be constructed with no more than three percent grade away from the road for a distance of at least thirty feet. Driveway shall intersect the Town Highway at a preferred angle of ninety degrees, but no less than sixty. Driveway shall be able to manage stormwater runoff on the Town Highway. Applicant will seed and hay and mulch all disturbed areas of ditch line within five days of disturbance. Applicant shall advise when the work is completed. And this is, this is a town road, but this is up on-
This is off of Courier-
Courier Road, so it's not paved up there?
Nope.
Okay, so we don't ask for the pavement. So can I get a motion to allow the-
Motion, sign that.
All in favor? Aye. Next one, I think somebody has to step down on this.
This is an exciting one.
It says, Rob Hecker, Twenty Overbrook Drive, Old Coach Road, Twenty Overbrook Road, Twenty, so the mailing address is Twenty Overbrook Drive, and it's coming on to Old Coach Road. The driveway's always been there. Brian, Rob owning it, it says always been there, and, once again, the fire department went, they're okay with it, the highway foreman went.
Yeah, very few conditions, as the driveway is already-
So it's already, yeah, so it's just a matter of cleaning up the permit.
Yeah, so culvert is not required for this driveway.
Being a respectful citizen.
Driveway shall intersect the highway at a preferred angle, same thing, ninety degrees and that. Driveway entrance onto Town Highway must be constructed with no more than, and this is like flat, you know, greater way applicant shall advise when the work is completed. Once again, is this onto a paved section? The paved section stops at that, it's not before, well, the first, the first part of, comes in off the main, but it stops before your house.
So the, there's pavement on one side, not the other?
Yeah, right. I'm saying Old Coach Road is not-
Old Coach- Old Coach is not paved.
Right, yeah, okay.
Oh, wait, Old Coach is paved, Overbrook's not.
Overbrook is not paved, but Old Coach, what you're looking for, I don't think it's paved at that point of, as a road. So.
Yeah, I was going to say, the, the conditions that Kevin laid out are basically just the most standard conditions because the driveway is already.
It's just Chris and I, I'll make a motion to move forward with the driveway for Old Coach Road for Robert Hacker with the conditions that the highway foreman and fire department put on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last thing I need is just the John Hancock.
Yeah. Rob, you want to sign this one? The other one.
I'll sign the other one, yeah. I'm fully in favor of both, though. I just wanted to.
While we're doing this, selectwood member can comment or concerns.
How are we making out with the lower part of the Killington Road?
I was going to say that and on my side here, but I got a phone call today from Tom Markowski telling me that they will come in tomorrow and LND or whatever to start doing the.
Striping.
Striping.
Oh, good.
The barrels will all come down tomorrow sweeping. I know that Comcast was in last Thursday, started doing their job of taking their lines, switching over. They said they would be in off and on and they would be finished by this Wednesday. Tom Markowski, in a meeting that we had with him, said that consolidated, said give them a week's notice. So he's called them last Thursday to come in. And the pavers look like they will be done tomorrow, so.
Very close.
Yeah, I mean, we're waiting for consolidated though, so then they can get those poles out of there and just finish up that last batch there.
Is there, are we going to, at some point, sit with VHB on this one? To figure out performance and where everything's at with the contract?
I think that that's going to be something that we're going to have to do, sit down with the town manager, the three of us, and go through what's, what's happening there.
Okay.
That's going to be sitting down with VHB, just let's get a little, like, go through the contract.
Okay.
And see.
Yeah, good.
I was going to bring that up, all that stuff, because Tom called me at like 4 o'clock saying, you know, and then they're going to be removing the signs going around town too tomorrow. The ones that have the black bags put over them. So, but I don't have anything else.
That's good.
We have open public comment. Kurt Norine, do you have anything?
I do not, but thank you for asking.
You're welcome. Okay, not hearing that. We've got down executive, oh, the bus, I want to read the bus. So we've got the one bus route, Chris, that does the two, two extra shifts in the summertime, which is like $14,480. The rate on that is still at $28 an hour because of some federal grants they still got for this year from COVID. Then there is a extra one loop. I think it's at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night in the wintertime. And that one there is only one loop, but there is no more federal funding on that one. And that's $17,340. With along our $1,200 appropriations that we give to the bus, it comes out to be just under 32 grand. And we have in our budget $25,000 and that's been the same for the last three years. But, you know, so we have the contracts back at the office. So, you know, throw out questions. We're, we're about $7,000 over what we were budgeted for this year.
But our service will remain the same as it was. The bus is, I mean, it's increasingly more and more important for everything, so I don't. We have a choice. There's a new director now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's a new bus route person. What's his name? Ken is no longer.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, well, there's another, yeah, there's that person running the routes. And there's also a new director. They're doing the executive director search. So.
And this is for, this is next year's budget?
Um, we're going to have to pay the 14, the $17,000 in the next month or so to get us through here. The $14,000 can get held off till July of next year. But we've already paid out, I think, $13,000 or $14,000 of the 15.
Those are increments.
So we're still like $6,000 short.
Okay.
But it's something that's held and, you know, it's been $25,000 for, I think, three or four years. This started like, this started before COVID, didn't it, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've held the price for that long. So, make a motion to accept the bus contracts for the two routes that are, been in place.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I'm just trying to think if, you know, at some point, we shouldn't have a meeting with them for the amount of money we're spending with them and try to, you know.
They will be going to see if they can get federal grants again. So, but this year they could not on the one.
Okay.
Because when we first saw it, Tom and I saw the contracts, it was like the, the two loops was cheaper than the one loop. And I was like, how'd that happen? And he said, well, because that one, the two loops is still getting $28 an hour. And the other one is getting nothing, so it's $80 an hour.
Ken's been still on the board?
He is still on the board.
Okay.
So we can get ahold of him to talk or whatever. I went to their last meeting, but Matt was not at it. I don't know how often Matt goes to, but we'll start finding out if they can go for other grants later on.
Okay.
All right, so you have a motion on the floor to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Executive session for?
Real estate.
Real estate first.
And personnel.
Okay. Personnel, you have, I see Mary Ellen's here.
Yep.
So why don't I step outside?
And do that first.
And then you do that first and then she can get home. And then I'll come back on the real estate, all right?
Yeah, cool.
So, is this one thing, as people say, like, since Mary Ellen is working here, I'm not her boss, but I'm not going to get involved in any of the conversations?